Then I looked at, we use other data account. They want five hundred dollars a month to host the credit card. Five hundred dollars a month for something else than a dollar bill.
I'm amazed.
Like, yeah, no.
That's not exactly my joke.
There's money in money. There's money in money.
See, he that more.
I'm sure you already know.
All right. Sorry, we're starting a little late. Let's uh. Let's call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge your public participation from four approval of the minutes from November fourteenth.
Hey, I went over. I thought they were actually kind of like this guy.
Uh, the only thing is, we're changing the time. We changed from seven to five on the third.
But we did that. I think we did that at this meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. We'll go.
I didn't know if you had to change the required.
No, I can change it for the.
Okay, then I'm good.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry.
All favor. Good force report from craft codes. Oh. You get this here.
No, he did. He did want me to add one thing to one of the properties here. Four seventy on the first page. Four seventy four crossroads, second. There was a complaint that came in about operating of a dumpster business at that location. They went out and spoke to them. They wanted to submit a home business. Permit to do so, but since they were storing something on the property, that's why it was uh. It was denied to do so. That person, and I think the issue was it didn't get into the description here. Uh, they found a location to store that stuff, not on premises. So the only thing that'll be there is the truck that he operates for the business, which qualifies for the home business. So that permit was issued, but that was the clarification there that didn't necessarily come up in the description that we tried to read through and understand.
Mr. London needs contact with me today. He said that he has secured the rental property now off site. He's gonna be moving all his vehicles into it. Home building that he's running. His goal is to get everything out of there by the end of next week. I said, well, let's send it to the second first year. It should done that inspection. He was confident he could do that. So hopefully we'll uh.
And then if he could just make with Jeff Mountain.
Yeah, and he said, I told him, the minute he definitely cleaned that one up. I talked to Jeff and he's gonna come out and take a look at it.
So you talked to Jeff.
I did.
Cause I'd love to know you were working. Where are you questioning? Make a motion to set a report. SEO report. So. I don't think that people withhold things. That they need to be inspected to open our. Um, I think that I wish they would have contacted us first. We would have had heads up, but they want to have everybody compliant. I think one of the questions is if they're getting a pump by the pumper that is licensed in our township to inspect all the other systems. Why wouldn't that qualify to inspect these systems? And I think that's uh, I think LTL was okay with that.
Yes.
There is a provision in the ordinance that says that inspections should be done by the SEO. But there's also a separate provision in the ordinance that says that the board supervisors can adopt rules and regulations for the administration of the ordinance. So my suggestion would be that you make a motion that uh, board of supervisors hereby adopts as a rule that um, if the pumper or a holding tank delivers to you want to go to township or to LTL, a satisfactory inspection report, that that will be accepted by the SEO unless there's some reason, reason to doubt the accuracy of that report from the home. And I think if you made that motion, LTL should be following that. Now, the other thing that I thought I saw in the email exchanges was the frequency of the inspection. If you wanted to change the frequency from a year to every other year or something like that, that's gonna require a move to the ordinance. Cause that's just like.
Just a clarification. This is just a bulk holding tank. In this instance. So there's no battle. There's no grain being.
It's just a holding tank.
So the inspection is doing.
Make sure that they're pumping out and that they don't just uh, hypothetically, if you had a bad customer, they would just not get pumped out and it would just run out all over the yard. Um, so what you're, I think what you're trying to confirm with the inspection is just that they're getting it pumped. And that they're not. Cause I mean, I've seen situations in old homes. They just run homes out at night property, you know?
Yeah.
You see two people in the woods, you know, uh, I mean, that happens. Yeah.
So I think we let the pumper inspected yearly like it's in the ordinance that when they put the holding tank, they need to get it inspected. You can get it inspected or pumped once a year to get it inspected. Maybe we would encourage to get it pumped every year. I don't think it'd be a holding tank.
I think they're pumping quite.
They're pumping more frequently than that.
Yeah, 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 that's exactly right. I mean, now if you have something that like, for example, if you have a business that only opens a couple hours a week, they may not fill the holding tank very often, but if it's a residential use, I gotta believe that they're pumping.
Well, the case in point here that was though inquired, does it not quite every year? Or does it, so would encourage them to do it every year for sure? I think they.
So this is a low volume user.
So I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how much risk to come out and inspect. I mean, it's a holding tank.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't go out and down in the tank. The pumper, I think, could inspect it as.
It's just a little disappointing that they let this thing go for three years and said, I think it would all of a sudden ambush these people. I mean.
Three years in the, yeah, didn't even tell us.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like somebody.
Trapped.
Yeah. Well, you know, that's about as long as Butch has been going. Butch Yoder used to handle this and he retired about that time. So they had a different person responsible.
So uh, so uh, are you guys okay with the pumper being either get it inspected or the pumper inspected? And should the inspection come to the township like the rest?
Or how does, how do those reports flow for the on lot system inspections? Do they come to the township?
They come to the township. Some of the companies send them in once a month. Some of them send them in once a week via either email, mailing or fax.
Right. Is there a form?
Yes.
Well, there ought to be a form and it sounds like it should be sent to the township and it should be clear that it's a holding tank so that you can.
Yeah, there's, there's like seven different options that they can, if it's a cesspool, holding tank, whatever, they can actually check up there.
So this inspection form that we're already using does have a place to say it's a holding tank. Okay. All right, well, that'll work.
Are there even that many holding tanks?
There's like twenty.
That's like too many.
Yes.
I'm not remembering correctly.
Yes.
Do we have that sheet on our website?
Uh, no, but I can put it on there.
We should, on a printable PDF.
Yep.
Then anybody can print it out.
And I think we have a list. Uh, or maybe that's something that LTL does of people that have holding tanks that they could, we can relay this message to them.
Yes. Well, all, all the letters that got sent out to everybody, they sent us a copy of it first and sent it out to everybody. So everyone that pretty much got a letter, I heard from and was questioning it. So I have all the information from everybody that got a letter and I can update them with the information.
Good.
Yeah, are we okay with that? So let's make a motion to whatever we need to do.
Adopt a rule under. Section five of ordinance number sixty that the board supervisors uh is directing property owners with holding tanks to have them inspected by the pumper. And a report on the township approved form shall be submitted by the pumper to the township. And if uh the report is received by the township and delivered to the SEO, the SEO should accept that as a satisfactory inspection report. Uh, unless there is some reason that the report is deemed to be defective or inaccurate.
On an annual basis.
On an annual basis.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'm looking for the recording machine.
We're in the, what are we, in the twenty first?
It's on.
Yeah, I didn't even, that was my job for how long? I didn't even realize it was. You don't have it laying there. I'm like, I'm just. We're on camera now.
Yes.
So you're gonna, so you'll relay that to all the holding tanks?
Yes, and I will let Brad know as well.
Please.
Yes. And I will put a form on the website so they can get that as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, police chief report. He's not here. I don't really have any.
Chief Al Schaefer had called me uh, this week and we had two instances. We don't have any ordinance that I know of that's set up. But we had two instances that we had. Um, one was a box truck and one was just a blue pickup truck that dumped off a little over seventy tires at one time into our bins. We don't have any rules or regulations as to businesses not dumping anything, but he said the one truck that was coming through the borough. Actually, tires were falling off of the truck as they were coming out here. And I guess he got stopped by one of the officers and he told him he was dumping it here. So he wanted to make sure we checked the cameras and yes, he did dump the tires here. There was over seventy tires on the truck. I don't know if we want to make some kind of.
I think we did address that at one time. Did we not? There was no commercial businesses.
Well, the commercial tires themselves, they couldn't.
Or commercial businesses.
Okay.
I think we had addressed that because we had somebody in the township that was dumping dumping tires in a garage.
Do we have anything posted on here that says?
No.
Now, all the.
Nothing about quantity or.
The signs just state it's car and light truck tires.
For Richmond Township residents.
No, the sign does not say that. Cause he asked me to take a picture of it and send it over to him. Cause he said if it does say that, he would make sure that it got handled that way, but it does not say township residents.
Do those bins now, do they get overwhelmed?
But we should have some sort of ordinance. If we have people bringing seventy tires, that's a lot cool.
That's a lot.
Well, as long as the ice and that keeps taking, I don't know uh, if our agreement with them has a condition on it. I'd have to look at that.
I think you should. I mean, if it, it'll get out of hand very quickly if that gets around.
Right. We have some people bringing in um, that I see coming in with trailers. Trailers have maybe twelve, fifteen tires in them, which is not a big deal, but I mean, the one Saturday I looked at the camera and there was, it's, I think it was called Fireworks RS or something. And I looked at the company. The company was from Douglasville, no other locations. And that truck was, the box truck was packed with tires.
We have some.
For Richmond township people.
Yes, for township residents.
You should put a sign out there.
Yep. No commercial tires and township residents only. Or it'll get.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the only thing I'm not sure about is whether there's limitation on residential versus commercial.
Well, even that, how many commercial places are there in the township that would dump tires? How many garages are there?
Not that many.
I can't even think of one.
No, there are also.
In the township.
But I'm sure it's.
Not like a can of tires.
No, no, I mean, they fill trailer with box trailers every week.
Right.
I'm sure it's limited to Richmond township people though.
Yeah.
Doesn't say that, but you're right.
So what do we have to do?
Doesn't Maiden Creek down there have Maiden Creek people bring their tires from Maiden Creek? They don't have, they don't have other people come from outside the facility, do they? I took tires down there one time and they said they couldn't bring them because I wasn't from that township.
I don't know where, where's that at?
On seventy three. On seventy three, they're not invisible.
Yeah, they bought the house right outside of it. They're gonna have a recycling thing down there.
From Zewiki.
Yeah, Zewiki's done good.
Okay, well, I would recommend a motion to have new signs posted out here at the tire dump that says township residents.
Five hundred dollar fine.
Well, then we need an ordinance.
So do we need to include in that sign, no commercial or is that already out there? No commercial truck tires?
I know exactly what's uh, sign was made by uh, the pressure was made by Lee High Cement, both of the signs.
Yeah, I would, I would get somebody to make a sign, Robbie, township residents only and no truck tires. Or tractor tires.
I think it already says that.
It does say something about the light car or car and light.
Or then just for township residents only. Maybe just put another sign.
That's what I think.
Tires.
That would be the easiest.
Yeah. However you handle it, Robbie, you know the drift the way we're wanting.
And then we'll just, I'll, I'll just keep an eye on the videos over the weekend to see if there's anything on there and if there's something that we need to have alerted. Chief Al Schaefer now.
Texas when you have the sign.
There's, there's a question, brother.
Yeah.
On the tire thing. I didn't know anything about this. I'm here nine years. Uh, what's the history with that? Where do these tires go?
They go to uh, the Lee High Valley, Lee High Cement plant.
In our hallway for free.
Yeah.
This is part of our zoning agreement with them. The, the other bins that are out there, is there any yard waste or yard debris?
No.
Is there ever any interest from the board to look into, say Burke's Soil and Stone has a yard lease facility over there Doverville or maybe up here where Zewiki?
Yeah, Main Creek.
Yeah, I mean, is that, is that open to township residents?
No.
Only Main Creek.
Only Main Creek, but it would be something to.
Back in town street, they have, they have a dump for.
Yeah, Main Creek.
Yeah, Main Creek. That's, that's dumping for everybody. I think, I think lets everybody dump there.
Yeah.
It's technically Main Creek, but I'm sure, yeah, a lot of.
A lot of people, especially Christmas trees and stuff.
Yeah.
So it's, it's going away.
Well, it's moving to a side of the township and they're gonna make it gated and have a dumpster, you have to lift it off. It's gonna be.
Yeah, they took that house.
It's a big change.
Garage. I guess that old man passed away there or something.
It hasn't been in the years.
We had one time where we had township recycling was provided by the county. And they did that away, wanted us to take that over and that was, that was.
That got out of hand.
That got out of hand. That was a challenge, but.
Well, something that you could talk to Maiden Creek about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile.
But a lot of townships are very rigid about not allowing anybody outside the township. I mean, some places have like a key fob system to get in, you know?
It gets out of hand very quick. Cause when we had the recycling, that people come and dump their garbage. You know?
I never bring anything over. Some of the big problems with that is they can't get rid of it. They bring a top grinder in twice a year and they grind this mountain of mulch. Then the idea is a resident stake the mulch. Problem is they can't get rid of the mulch.
Well, Zewiki's in that business, so.
Yeah, that's what they do with it.
They would be a good fit. They'll charge it over the leg though.
Burke's, Burke's Soil and Stone's in a, some sort of agreement between municipalities also.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, lease port takes your.
That's the way to competition.
I just, Zewiki, he's pretty community oriented. He might, he might do something if we reach out to him.
Yeah, he might be worthwhile.
I just seen him last week.
Chris, you want to talk to Chris? The old man retired. He's not those again.
I just seen him the other night.
He's got old timers.
You know, just.
Maybe he didn't remember.
On a side note there. About two years ago, we had some stuff, yard debris, uh, pine trees and so forth. And I, I drove into the area that speaks to Maiden Creek township residents only that you speak to, you know, that over by the uh, cement mill. So I picked up the phone and called uh, Zewiki who explained where I lived. I don't live in Maiden Creek township. I said, I live in Richmond. And I explained that I lived on Eagle Road. And he said, I'm giving you permission to dump this. You know, we, we do stuff for the community. I said, just so you understand, I don't live in Maiden Creek. As I said, I live in Richmond. It's all right. Don't worry about dumping. But I've taken things there off record since and no, you want to reflect back on that conversation, but you don't feel right about doing it, even though it could be, you know, a few ranches. So as I said, a lot of municipalities have things and uh, you guys have, what were your question in here? The tire dumping, you know, and outsourced to go to the cement mill, but be nice if you had something or at least take a look and see how much money that would cost the taxpayer.
Or just do something with Main Creek, say, hey, can we?
Can we tag?
Yeah. Can we do something? Can we, you know?
Especially if they're gonna have the facility.
If there's a cost.
Cause the big thing is the top grinder.
Yeah.
So he, he uh, grinds out any mulch on the.
Yeah, I think the problem over there is people were dumping everything.
Yeah.
Chunks of concrete, sofas, tires, everything over there.
Chairs.
Chair, it's a mess. I mean, it's a mess.
I mean, as soon as you have some.
You always, someone ruins it. It's, you know, a good thing.
Yeah, people just ruin it. Maybe that's something to check into. Not sure that I don't miss having recycling here. I do too. Kind of bothered me. That was, that was, that was a good thing.
That was a real good thing.
What was the cost to have that?
Uh, it was, the whole county program only cost seventy seven thousand. Then they wanted us to take over and then our costs would be the same as theirs because they had a bulk discount. And it would have been just here. And I think, I'm not sure what the cost would have been to us, but it was kind of like, it was a little frustrating. I guess it was we were just disappointed with the county that they didn't continue it. And I thought they would budge, but they didn't.
Well, the economics have gotten worse since then. Yeah, the cost of getting rid of the stuff is a lot higher. So I, if we revisited that, I would guess it would cost a lot more than they were proposing at that time.
Yeah, and they would have gave us the dumpsters. Then we had to pay to get them moved to them. You gotta pay to get rid of it now.
Yeah.
Garbage. It's not like they would.
It has no value.
No value. But it's negative value.
Yeah, they cheat.
You gotta pay to get rid of it.
And this land, these, all these little landfills around here that are stop stations that I go to. Here the time runs out and they're, they're all big landfills all around, down route ten. Morgantown uh, on route ten to one seventy, seven twenty four. They're all talking about closing up because they're all over full.
Yeah.
Everyone's putting a trash out of this. That's what you're talking, they don't even know they can re-sign another year.
Yeah.
They gotta do a year contract with it. It's not gonna be good.
That's gonna be a problem.
That's gonna be a big problem. I don't know why they don't sell the fuel out of it. Cause they're burning down there in Morgantown. I can't believe they're burning that fuel up.
Yeah.
Big flames at night time.
All right. Um, Virgiville. I don't have any questions.
Any more questions?
Virgiville. Anything to report other than what's on your report?
Um, the only thing I can have that's coming up, I guess, that I should make you aware of is uh, the two gentlemen that died in that fire at school. They're from Lucipoli. Um, that's Saturday of viewing and Kenton is relocating our whole company up there for the day. So I believe what's gonna happen is Virgiville and ours are gonna uh, gang bang and take like four guys out of each company and man, and man Kenton's company for the day, like from nine o'clock. Both still split. Don't have guys down here yet, but that's what we're looking at doing that way. They still have a friendship in that area. Good neighborship enough.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. That's a heck of a thing, man.
I have to be on the board.
Unfortunately, the one gentleman needs to run to Atlanta.
Yeah, it looks like.
Yeah, you went to school with my son. Paris, I know.
What's that?
Yeah.
And he was our old neighbor. I assume he was the son of a neighbor. He was young at the time.
Terrible. Okay, motion to approve the twenty twenty-two dash fifteen write note updated for the hours. You got a lot of write notes?
Yeah, I did a whole lot.
Um, sometimes we have uh, four or five a week and sometimes we've got nothing.
Really?
Yeah.
Are they residents or are they?
Some of them are, I think it's called smart procure, that they come in every few months and they need um, a list of the vendors that we paid.
Yeah, so a lot of this is business related. It's not really public interest. It's more.
And there's also.
People getting data.
If it's electronic, there's not. If it's actual copies of things, then there is cost.
But there's still time.
Right.
Yeah.
So it should be padded out the updated.
You can't charge for the time. The only you can charge for is the reproduction costs. Like tape off.
Interesting. Uh, pretty much puts us right on the minutes. It must get quite a bit. I don't think that's who asked for one.
Wow.
Too, they get a lot of time too to make it work.
Yeah, I saw that same thing make it a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting uh, it's interesting.
What's your right?
Is that because of more litigation on there?
Some of it, I think some of it's uh, some consistent neighbors.
Yeah. I think, I think they try and do it to discourage the neighbors from requesting like they're sure that they're. I don't, I don't know. I, I was only, I'm gonna be like, oh, who's interested? So I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the meeting dates for twenty twenty-three. I don't see any conflicts at this time for myself, but.
Nor do I. You make a motion.
Oh, you separately have uh, your reorganization meeting? Do you have a reorganization meeting?
Yes, on the third.
Yeah, we added.
On the third. On the third.
Didn't see a motion for that. What time?
That was last, last meeting we had mentioned for, yeah, that was at five o'clock.
So I'll make the motion to approve these meeting dates.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make the motion to adjust the time for the January third reorganization meeting to five P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is it okay if I'm not?
Yeah, we weren't expecting anybody to be here except the public. Suppose we don't do it, that would be awkward for city. You know what I mean? You did a good job, Chris. I, I've seen townships, I've seen, I've seen the.
More awkward now.
I've seen the effect of not good solicitors. And it's not a good, it's not a pretty situation. Motion to approve the Optimus Club hosting at Fool's Run, uh, April first, they've done this multiple years. I think Chris has to review the old harmless and the insurance, but they know what we're looking for, they have everything here. It seems the map, everything that we've asked for in the past.
Yeah, it's like they are just following.
So I, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the annual maintenance agreement for the generator at the Luiz Ford Freedom Plant, Dynatec. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve renewal rates for the dental vision benefits for twenty twenty-three. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, increase the quarter E D U, E D U charge from two seventeen to quarter to two twenty. That's in line with our schedule.
Right. It's effective the first of the year? I guess.
We have to make it effective when we can get the billing. The P A Ms change.
P A Ms.
So I don't know when the billing goes out, I think that's in February. You know, it's not.
To be honest with you, I don't know, but I, this is the one of the resolutions that I found on the computer system that. It on there, so it showed that January first was the date, and we have letters and everything that I have ready to go as soon as this is signed and ready, I'm gonna send it off to the residents.
So I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then you'll take care of P A Ms?
Yes.
And sending the letter to the residents?
Residents, yes.
And then the last resolved paragraph says this shall be effective January one twenty-two.
Approval of the tax collector sitting dates. Yeah, I see that's not a bad thing here, I don't have any conflict here, it does. Glad you're able to throw this down already.
I'll make the motion to re-approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the Fleetwood Police Service Agreement for twenty twenty-three. Did you have a chance to look over it, Chris?
No, I didn't see this. Um, and I thought that there was something in here that required us to do it by resolution unless they changed that, because they have so many of these now, then I had changed the procedure. Do you want to approve it subject to my review?
Yes, that's what I was trying to suggest. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement for twenty twenty-three, subject to Chris's review.
Just like.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eagle Road Speed Study. District. What's your last name?
Moir.
Moir. Moir. They, they have it up, Robbie said one way, I'm gonna flip it for the other way, so then we'll see the results.
Okay, Chris, I appreciate you guys for listening and applying into that. Thanks. Just a question for clarity, when you're approaching that, and typically when I've approached other speed devices like that, say as an example. In the, cuts down in between Dunkin' Donuts and White's. As you approach that, it tracks your speed so that you as the voter is can view it. Okay, so I understand it to be working at that point. When you approach this, you don't have that.
It shut off.
It shut off, but it's still collecting data.
It shut off to collect data because when that would flash.
Okay.
Typically people slow down.
Right.
So we want to get the raw data first.
Okay.
And when it cuts down to more of the speed deterrent, that's why we're posted there.
Yeah, it, it, it works out there too.
It does, it does work. I mean, it's, you see people break as soon as they, they hit that, but we're trying to get raw data on this one.
So when you speak to switching it, are you just collecting data as you're going towards it and not coming?
Whatever way it's facing, whatever way it's facing, it's gotta face that way, so they're flipping.
And what data does that collect? Speeds?
Speeds and.
The amount of traffic?
Am I correct, Robbie?
I believe so.
I think that's what it is.
And the time?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, it's the times and sometimes that box can even get like classifications too, so. It can go from like just a smaller car up to different class trucks. Sometimes, I don't know, each of those are a little different, but. Everything, everything else that you said, yeah, they're almost always.
So we should have that data in January to review.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
And you can do it dated from two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, there was, there was the study that, that the township had gotten information on that road in twenty fifteen, which I think was before they paid it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that, that basically had. It, it took Schwerer Road, it's kind of the cutoff where they looked at one both sides of Eagle and. The, the way you can do that is it was, the way that study went up was like the safe driving speed. So it's a little different, I mean, it's somebody who goes out there and actually drives the road to what they feel is comfortable and the, the. Engineer was Gary, who had done this plenty of times before, but he, he got speeds on that road that were. Right there around forty miles per hour, which was at the time, and I think still is, the posted speed limit.
We haven't changed it since he did the study.
So that's.
We did the whole township at the time.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll review that data when we get in there.
Right, so you'll be able to compare twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Right, what are you looking for there as a board supervisors? I mean, when you, when you compare that data from twenty fifteen to current. What's something that you go, oh, time out here? What's an issue here?
There's, there's guidelines that the state sets, that we'll look at them speeds and take an average. And they just explain to, correct me if I'm wrong, we gotta take that data and we can't arbitrarily say, hey, everybody's running fifty miles an hour at this road, we're gonna put it to twenty-five. You know, whatever the speed is.
Yeah, whatever you, whatever you record as a speed for, they call it the eighty-fifth percentile speed, but you can just pretty much call it the. Most average speed that people are driving out there. And you can't, you can't adjust that more than five miles per hour in either direction from what that number is. So if you get a forty-one miles per hour, you should post that either at forty or forty-five. It's kind of the summary of where they set the study when you do those studies. Unless there's extenuating circumstances, but even that's very specific in that situation.
So are you looking at average speed or are you looking at extreme?
The eighty-fifth percentile, which would be, um, hundred is the fastest, right? So eighty-fifth is.
Yeah, and, and that's, it's basically kind of, it's not your average speed, it's where the, the. The largest point of the curve as far as volume is gonna be traveling. It's kind of a generic way of describing it, but it's pretty much, that's, that's how they come up with that number. So that it's, it's, again, it's, it's close to the safe running speed where somebody who knows to try to get out there and drive it safely would hopefully fall in that same number. But this is by volume, so you really kind of get a, a bigger population of who's driving that road and trying to come up with that number.
Instead of just Gary, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, appreciate it.
And, and we have to do that because in the township prior to this, they had arbitrary speed limit signs. Like there was roads that were twenty-five miles an hour where there was no houses on it, and straight stretch, and if you get a ticket or the police. Enforce that and you didn't do the proper studies, that they could, the tickets null and void. If somebody was smart enough to push back. So we tried to make the whole township uniform that the police could enforce the tickets and make them stick. That was legal.
They sit on ten, they drive rather than, they, they go flying down Old Town Road about a hundred miles per hour. You stop, you go, people, ninety-five, eighty-five. I come down with my big truck, and they come around that turn doing like sixty, I turn real slow, they slow down quick.
Everybody drives too fast.
They do, I mean, they drive real fast.
It's horrible, Maiden Creek.
It's, oh, it's, Maiden Creek Road where I live on, it's like.
Coming down that hill there.
It's, it's like a racetrack, and the trucks, I mean, the trucks.
They also, the Smithville.
They, they, they try and get it running, you go up the hill, and it's like, it's like sixty, sixty-five on that little road.
And Drysdale Road at nighttime, at ten o'clock, they, they race around you. I don't believe it, that's, I believe, on that winding turn, the cars are coming our way.
That's, that's bad spot too. And we talked, they've got something in the nineties on that road.
I, I believe it. I do thirty-five and it, it really makes them mad, they try to pass me, and I, I turn over to y'all once, they can't get around me.
It's, it's a challenge.
Well, the cars are coming our way, I don't even know.
Really good record, least agreeable.
Yeah.
The copy I have in front of you, on the middle of page one, it has the twenty twenty-two rate. And it says in the next paragraph that the purpose of this agreement is to set the rate for twenty twenty-three. And then when I turn the page, there's no rate.
Do you just want to fill it?
That would be nice. The only number I see in that paragraph in page two is what the reduced monthly rate is after you deduct the contribution to the community library.
Right.
So does that mean that the numbers are identical to twenty twenty-two? Or what's going on there?
No.
I mean, and is your copy the same as mine, if it's blanked out?
Yes, all of them are blank because, uh, Chris did not put the numbers in there, he said he was trying to just get it approved.
Over tonight?
I. But he told me that six sixty, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred eleven dollars and forty-nine cents was the actual amount.
That's what was on there.
Can you say that again, six?
Six sixty-seven, six eleven, forty-nine.
Divided by minus four, divided by twelve. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Now, what did you, what was your formula, or was that number?
Four thousand. We give four thousand to the library and that comes off to.
Okay, and that, that's the second calculation, so it's four thousand, okay. So six six seven. Six eleven, point four nine. Divided by twelve would be fifty-five, six thirty-four, point two nine. Minus three three three, point three three. Makes the monthly payment fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars and ninety-six cents. So the first blank should be six six seven, six eleven, point four nine. Second line should be fifty-five thousand, six thirty-four, point two nine. And the last line, that number should be replaced with fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars, point nine six. So that's my comment on the agreement.
Is that your own comment?
Yeah. So that is, what was the percentage we were looking at initially? Is that, I mean, is that.
Well, it was, it was a hu, it was a hundred and some thousand.
Yeah.
Increase, which it comes up to.
Five, yeah, it's, it's a hundred, ten thousand.
Right. Well, it's more than that, it's hundred twenty.
Hundred twenty because it's from five forty-two.
I think it was like one twenty-four.
Yeah, I think that's what we got. It just seems fair when you break it down to a market.
We had six seventy-one budgeted, so we had that budgeted.
Good, that's a twenty-two point nine six percent increase.
That's a lot. Engineers report for the solar panel.
I had sent the email to everyone, just update where they stood after they got their N P S permit approval, they did receive that.
How did they get that that fast?
Somebody, somebody made a couple of calls.
Yeah, I would have to figure it. Yeah, that's a kind of thing, has to go through the governor's office, it doesn't happen real fast.
Yeah, I, I think at some point they mentioned they knew someone, but.
Yeah.
They, they did have, I think in the end it's about four sheets that had to switch out. Their solar panel detail needed a little bit of revision just to make sure it was consistent. Give that to D E P, they kind of caught something that, I was just looking at the standard drawings, but the detail had something where it needed to change, just to be consistent. And then there was a table for infiltration characteristics that they wanted on a couple of sheets. So they made those changes. They've been since trying to coordinate when they can come in and switch out those pages. It's been a little bit of a holdup, the same reason I think they didn't get their first D E P reviews, they're not familiar with Burke's County and. They're, they're learning their recording system right now. Yeah, we're, we're waiting for them, but I think in the next couple of days, they're working with the county on when they can schedule a date to go in and record it, but. They're looking to move forward on that.
And I think that's, you know, we have all signed agreements, we have all the money here, we're paying. Do they have any review fees if they owe the township?
No. Everything's been filled up. They did have, they did have a certain amount in the escrow that they have been. Getting removed as the bills were coming in.
Is there, is there any of the agreements that have to get recorded with the plans?
Yeah, and we're holding the original agreements, uh, so I'll record those once they have the plan recorded, so let me know.
Oh, okay, okay, because that's, I've put that on them to verify and figuring out what needed to or didn't need to.
Yeah, well. I need confirmation, recording a plan, and I'll have Cynthia in my office record the agreement. Two or three agreements that need to be recorded.
So even up today, they're still trying to figure out when they can get that recorded, but they are moving forward with that part of it.
I'm doing. But I want, before building permits are released, you want confirmation, plan recording.
Mm-hmm.
And then I will confirm to you when the agreements are recorded, only then should permits be released.
Yeah, last week when I spoke with you, I checked with Craft Codes, and I think even before the building permits can be released, they're still working on a few.
Okay.
Comments. I think they're close, but it's on that end that there's still us.
Most of the permits we do there.
Uh, it's a feeling.
He won't let anything through.
Won't let it get missed, that's for sure.
Yeah, Jeff is tough.
So that's, that's where that's at. Haven't heard anything from other than, so I'm sure once that happens, they'll say. Just a couple of quick updates that weren't on here, just this, today we got a email from D E P that the M S four waiver was approved. So that's in for another five years, um, unless anybody would want to appeal that decision. But that's, that's there and, um, yeah, until January thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight. That's kind of, unless something drastically.
Did you say we're exempt until then?
Uh, yes, that's the M S four.
Time to wide basis.
Waiver exemption, um, that.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
That's real good.
Yeah, so that's that, and the only other thing to update is, um. The Penda approval of this past year's street work went through, and that approval got sent to Jen, so that's all done and all over to. I know there's, and I don't know if you have this on your list, but things to get to with some of the complaints with the streetlights.
Oh, we discussed that before, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're complaints, but it's part of the way to develop the plan, so.
And and we should just have tell them to contact the developer, right?
They can, yeah, but I know if they're already digging the foundations for them to go in, I'm sure they don't want to do it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's on the plans, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
It's nothing to do with us.
The the first one that came in, I checked it with Jen and it it's right where it shows on the plans. And maybe it changed a couple of feet, but that's probably because of utilities or other, but that's part of development. Anyway, that's, that was it.
Chris Stewart.
All right, well, we had a off the record conversation a little bit before the meeting about some of the issues that have come to light residents not getting sewer bills after there's a change in ownership. And again, my recommendation to the township is that we have a procedure where Jen compares the transfer tax report that we get from the county against our sewer customer list and make any updates to PAMs that haven't already been communicated to PAMs as a result of the sewer updates that are requested by title companies. And in addition to that, you know, we had this one that had been scheduled for personal property share of sale. And, you know, there wasn't anything there that we thought would be valuable enough to justify the process. There was share of sale of real estate. We were hoping that the property would be taken by a mortgage holder. And we didn't understand why that share sale was canceled. Well, now we know they filed for bankruptcy, so. You know, typically, we get paid, in in the case of bankruptcy, if it's a, if it's a consumer bankruptcy, and I'm not sure what classification. I don't have notes on what classification of bankruptcy is, so sometimes bankruptcy is good for us because we'll get paid regularly. We won't have any discharge of that debt. But it will not be an immediate payoff.
But worst case, we have a lien on the property.
Yeah, yeah.
I never do the lien.
That's right, we do that. We can execute on that lien while they're in bankruptcy, but the lien doesn't go away. The other one we have highlighted there is this one with the ownership issue, the former Will Fargo property. Another one we have highlighted is the property where, you know, there was a payoff to PAMs, but PAMs didn't collect our collection costs and we sent a letter to them. That one I would just leave alone because we we have a lien for a lot more than what they owe us. And we told them we're not going to release that lien, even though they paid that substantial amount to PAMs because they haven't paid our user fees. They haven't responded to that, but I think we ought to just hold the stats in that until they pay us. But I don't think there's enough money at stake for us to undertake any separate collection at the moment. We have a couple of other accounts that are creeping up. I don't know if any of these are ones that we found not properly built or any of those.
Well, I don't think so.
So anyway, I guess just my point is that there's a couple of accounts that are creeping up. And what I would suggest is that, you know, if these people are in financial distress, it'd be a good idea to update our liens to protect our position. So what I would suggest is for all those that are over a thousand dollars, that we make sure that their liens are up to date.
Great.
Four.
No, there's one, two, I think Burkeholder, is that the one that paid off on Criss Cross Road?
No, one, two, three.
Four, two, three, four, five. So I think this 621 Criss Cross Road, that's.
That was the one that was sold to different people. That was the one that it changed the ownership.
So, uh, two things, are you agreeable to the process that I recommended?
Yes.
On, you know, checking the transfer tax list against the sewer customer list? And if you want to make a motion for that, just to put that on the record. And then the other thing is, do you agree for me to update the liens on those five accounts that we just looked at?
Yeah, I'll make a motion if we cross check the transfer tax list to the to the PAM's billing list. When that's updated and for you to update your liens on these five, have these five been notified? Can we confer, confirm that they have been notified that they're delinquent?
No, that's another question. I guess we had a pre lien procedure of sending a collection letter. I don't know if you sent any of those sort of.
I sent one to account number 1006. And 2099, I sent one to that, them also.
Okay. And then I would just do the rest.
Okay.
Because now they hit the threshold.
Okay.
I'll second both those motions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so what I'm going to do then is update the liens on the two accounts that Jen already sent letters to. We're going to send letters to the other three.
Correct.
And I'll wait to see what happens with those letters before I file those liens.
But there's just one over 1,000.
Yeah. By the way, you didn't send the letter yet.
Okay.
That's a year's worth. You're at 1,000, that's a year's worth of sewer you didn't pay. My my question for the ones that weren't built properly. I vote, I I'm in agreement that they owe the sewer. But I don't know how we address PAMs' penalties.
Yeah, glad you brought that up.
I don't think they should be any penalties until they start being built correctly. And I don't know how we address that with PAMs. That's where they make their money, if the township has to eat some of that because of our missing that, but it's not fair to the homeowner either. Not not saying that they didn't know that they had public sewer, I think they did, but in fairness, we didn't build.
I think that it's not fair to these residents to get charged those penalties in interest if they didn't receive a bill. So what we could do is propose to PAMs that we'll pay them half. And that they don't collect the other half.
I think they'd probably be agreeable to that.
So that would be, I mean, who who do you want to talk to PAMs to see if they're willing to do?
I think you should or your office, because you understand the contract and they say, hey, well, you're liable or you're not liable.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Comes a little better. Not that Jen wouldn't be able to do that. So so I'm, and I'm just curious too, because say PAMs is billing these people for two years. They come in here, pay their sewer bill, but without the penalties. What happens to those penalties? They're still responsible, right? We can't make a deal with them and say, hey, we're going to forgive your penalties with that's part of the contract, right? PAM has to. We can't forgive penalties that PAM imposes.
Well, what I think will happen is if we don't make a deal with PAMs, those charges are going to stick to that account uh, until they're either paid or not, but you know, they're not going to go away. PAMs is going to make them go away.
Right. My 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 point is, we can't make a deal with the residents. Say, hey, you paid us today, you owe me penalties. That's not something we can do. We have to work that out with PAMs because they're the ones that impose, that's how they come through, that's in their contract.
And what I'm thinking is, I I don't know, from a bookkeeping standpoint, what the best way is to handle this. If, you know, do we need to have PAMs create invoice?
Oh, you asked, I did that.
Figure that out.
I'm I'm not talking about these accounts specifically. I'm talking about something down through. Someone comes in, hey, if I write you the check today, we give the penalties. If we make that deal, we're still going to be liable for PAMs' penalties, I think.
Yes, that's, well, that's PAM's position.
Yeah, but that's, I think.
Based on how.
I'm just asking, that's my understanding of the contract.
Yeah, I mean, you know, before we had PAMs, we used to make deals here.
Negotiating.
Yeah, we did. They would come here.
But you know, the other thing we have to keep in mind, PAMs works for us.
Right. But we're contracted to them.
Well, I I know they are, but we have choices too.
Right. And I think they're.
We have to remind them of that.
And I think they're willing to do that.
And I would hope they.
They are, I mean, in the past, I'm just saying, we got to keep in mind in the future, we can't just make deals.
Right.
And think they're, they're not going to, and and forgive their.
Yeah, that whole structure has changed now.
Correct.
Yes, I I don't.
I just want to keep that in the forefront of everybody's.
I guess all I'm saying is that they should show some.
And because it's saying, in their, in their, in our defense too, they maybe should have got returned sender, not. So so they, I think they're, and they've always in the past been agreeable.
That's good.
We just can't speak for them.
Right.
You know what I mean? We got to make sure.
On the 65 Walnut Town address, it shows on there 1,951 dollars due. When I talked to the homeowner, he said he was willing to pay, if everybody was agreeable with it, 1,856 for the account to have it brought back down to zero.
Start over, which one is that?
The 65 Walnut Town. 1170.
65 Walnut.
Yes. He's willing to pay 1,856, which is just shy of what he actually owes. And I, and because he said he was in in October, but not for the full month of October, so I don't know if he's taking a certain amount off from that month. That's why he started to get billed for the fourth quarter.
And how much does PAMs want in addition to that, you know?
This was the actual.
1,951?
Yeah, 1,951 is the actual amount.
Other bucks, yeah.
When he says, pay with that, he would bring us cash in, that we would actually send a check out to PAMs. That way his balance could be zero and.
So is the 1,951, is the 1,951 including the PAMs' penalties?
No.
Correct.
But when I spoke to PAMs, they said that if they were willing to pay that, they would bring down their their fees by half.
Okay, so they already said that, okay.
They said that, but I, she said, you want us to reduce it by half. I said, let me talk to the board first. Let me see how everything goes first, and if it's agreeable, then we'll.
Well, then, we're gonna, but they're still short $95.
Pressable.
And they're saying that's the customer's calculation of when he got out or when he got in.
Correct.
But not when he made settlement.
It was, I don't remember, I think he said October 14th or 15th it was.
They made settlement or they moved in? I don't care when they moved in.
Okay.
When they made settlement is the date we use.
Right.
So if we're going to forgive the penalties, you just got to look at that date.
Okay.
And you guys, are you guys opinion it's?
So what I'm hearing you say is you would accept payment of the sewer user fees from the date of settlement to the end of whatever the quarter is that's owed. And pay PAMs half of the penalty interest.
Yeah.
On a condition that PAMs.
Forgives the other.
Pays the rest. And if there's any other user fees, we have to just tell PAMs that we're writing those off and they should make this guy's account have a zero balance.
Because it's not going to affect them if we write off user fees, the hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Just see from the date of settlement. I don't care from the date of movement, because my understanding from the conversation, I bought it here, but I didn't move in till here.
Right, right.
That that's.
Okay.
That's not how we.
Can you try to get that part of it, you know, the date of settlement?
Yes.
And the user fees from the date of settlement.
And I'm okay to prorate if they if they made settlement one month in, you know what I mean? Then prorate it if that's what you come up with.
Okay.
And it's not a lot, I guess, if if we got, if we get the other 1,850. I'll make a motion that you guys, that Chris, you settle this. And if we have to settle for the less, but I I think we should do from the the date of movement.
Let's see this.
Huh?
All in favor?
Aye.
And did we ever find out if they got title insurance or didn't get title insurance?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Still can't understand how this happened.
You know, there's a lot of people behind without title insurance.
But you have to pay. You can't finance it for that.
Good point.
I don't want to. Sunday estate handled that sale to throw it back. No title insurance. What surprise? Police write checks like that, pay cash account, I guess he doesn't care.
No, he doesn't.
Anything else?
No, no.
Stackback, we seen this email today from Stackback. I don't think he has any questions that he needs answers for. We'll put on the agenda for January to approve the line, the.
Line inspection.
Line inspection, unless we want to improve it right now. I think a dollar a foot.
I thought you agreed.
For the other third is is fair. So I make a motion to approve that to do the next third.
All right.
All in favor? We'll get that right off the agenda. Roadmaster's report. Anything you want to elaborate on, Rob?
Not specifically, no. Did they do anything on, on Southview Road about the water runner?
Across the road there, right past it.
I forget what the address is there. I know my suit's had, it's just about that.
We talked about checking the drain or something.
There's a little, it's it's just runoff from, what's that, Park Road. There is a drain there. It runs out down Valley View there, and a trailer park there, goes right down to Holly, right down Southview, curves straight across. Gets icy.
Yeah.
Where is this from?
Down Port Road, went off of like, what's that, Esprit Shades there. On Port Road. Dr. Esprit Shades. It's down past, uh, Pleasant Run.
Okay, it's past Pleasant Run.
Past Pleasant Run, past Eli, it's just about the Main Creek border.
Okay.
It 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 just comes, it's just too much water. Obviously, it flows downhill, it flows across the road this time of year, and then it freezes. But maybe, I don't know, sometimes 20, 50 feet of the road, which is, only thing we can do is salt it.
Well, maybe that's something we should take a look at at some point.
Is there any, there's no storm sort of area there, there? No basin?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, there are pipes running down from the creek here. You thought about the south, the pub house, a long town road there.
No. South, Southview.
Southview.
It was towards Main Creek Township.
Okay, down that, down that hill.
Yeah, the only drainage is down in Main Creek Township, right there by my, by my house.
Yeah, that's a problem.
So this water's coming the other side of Park Road, I guess?
Oh, yeah.
I think it comes down between the trailer park there and the house that's right there.
Most of that.
Is that Eli right there?
Yeah, Eli.
Right out of Eli there.
I always look at it if you'd want us to. When you're in the area sometime. Sometime I'm down, meet with Rob or others, just give them a call. There's some super sense of urgency, but.
There's a super sense of urgency, but it's maybe something we should address at some point. Because, you know, it might get cold again, and then you got a real icing issue.
Do you have any questions? Okay, secretary, payment of the bills.
General fund, we had check numbers one oh seven twenty-four to one oh seven fifty-four, including EFTs for ninety-three thousand eight hundred six dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
State fund, check number twenty-one eighteen for nine thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Light fund, check number twenty-one fifty-four for six hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Light fund, check number twenty-one fifty-four, I'm sorry, I just said that, sorry. Sewer fund, check numbers thirty thirty-three and thirty thirty-eight, including EFTs for nineteen thousand eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Walnut Town Fire Escrow, check number twenty-one fifty-six for seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Make a motion to pay it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Virginville Fire Escrow, twenty-one fifty-six for seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have nothing more.
Okay, I don't have, uh. I don't really have anything either. We missed you last week, again, uh, last month, but I think you did a nice job. We're lucky to have a back.
Yes. Yes, I appreciate that.
Any public participate for the poll? I'll make a motion with your.
I'll select.
All in favor? Paul's still working?
Yes, I, I don't know why, but he is.
Yeah. Oh, there's Paul now.
He's about ninety.
Because he had, I was going to say, he didn't pay.
I, I don't know, I got to talk to him about next.